Good evening. I'd like to call the zoning board of appeals for Tuesday, August 20, 2019, to order. Will the city call the roll, please?
Ms. DeFeo.
Here.
Ms. Lesney.
Here.
Mr. Weigum.
Present.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Mr. Friedman.
Here.
Madam Chairperson, you have a quorum to conduct business.
Thank you. Are there any communications?
Not at this time.
Okay, so we'll move into the public hearing. For those of you who haven't joined us before, I'll just give you a quick explanation of how we operate. The city will call each case by the case number. If you're the appellant, we ask you to step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. There's also a sign-in sheet if you could sign in there at the podium. We ask you to give us a brief explanation of what you're asking for and why. Then the city will read the facts of the case. We'll ask you to agree with those or add anything else at that time. We'll open it up to public comment if there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak on that case. Then we'll turn it over to the board to deliberate, discuss, and likely ask questions of you as the appellant as well, so if you'll just stay in the front row for us. And then we'll make a decision and then move on to the next case. So will the city call the first case, please?
For ZBA case 1916, the appellant, Matthew Gondringer, is requesting the following waiver from the board to erect a fence beyond the side of a house along a double frontage yard. Zero feet is permitted, 24 feet 6 inches is proposed. The property is located on the east side of Marshall Street between Morrison Street and Webster Avenue at 29708 Marshall Street, Sidwell Parcel 2412, 429010, zoned RA, single-family residential, and this appeals to section 5.37, paragraph 1, article 4 -- sorry, 5.37, 1, article 4, paragraph C1D, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Hi, good evening.
Hi. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, absolutely. Could you give us your name and address, please?
Yes, Matthew Gondringer. I live at 29708 Marshall Street.
Okay, and can --
I'm not hearing you.
Okay, can you pull the mic up just maybe a little bit?
Yeah, is that better?
Great. And then if you could just explain to us what you're asking for and why?
Yes, I'd like to enclose my side yard on my corner lot with a fence. We have two options that we're considering, just sort of depending on what the board is willing to approve. We're considering a six-foot privacy fence or a four-foot wood fence. So those are two options we're considering. And we'd like to enclose the side yard. We have two dogs and small young nieces and nephews, so we just want to have a large safe space for them to play in.
Okay, sounds good. Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
For ZBA case 1916, the appellant, Matthew Gondringer, is requesting the following waiver from the board to erect a fence beyond the side of the house along a double frontage yard. Zero feet permitted, 24 feet 6 inches is proposed. The property is located on the east side of Marshall Street between Morrison Street and Webster Avenue at 29708 Marshall Street, Sidwell Parcel 2412, 429010, zoned RA, single-family residential. The property is to the north, south, across Morrison, east and west across Marshall, are zoned RA, single-family residential, and are developed with single-family dwellings in a Meadowvale subdivision. The subject property is a two-story dwelling on a corner lot. Field inspections of the surrounding property reveal most lots have fencing that is a mixture of chain link and wood materials. Corner lots along Morrison Street exhibit fencing in the same location as the proposed fence. The property to the west across Marshall has a six-foot brick and stone wall in the same location as the proposed fence. The owner is proposing to install a four-foot or six-foot wood privacy fence 10 inches from the property line along Morrison. The fence would run from the rear property line to the rear of the garage at the proposed 10 inches from the property line. Large trees and other landscaping are present in the side yard along Morrison, which could be impacted by alternate fence locations other than proposed. The fence ordinance requires a fence on a double frontage lot to align with the side of the house and extend to the rear of the yard -- or rear of the lot. The appellant is seeking a waiver of 24 feet 6 inches beyond the side of the house to the rear yard. Zero feet permitted, 24.6 feet is proposed.
Okay, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
Yes, and thank you for including in there the part about the landscaping. I did not mention that. We put significant time and effort into the landscaping since we bought the house four years ago, and so we would not want to have to redo any of that with the fence.
Okay, sounds good. Will the staff read the recommendation, please?
Staff's recommendation is for favorable consideration of a 24.6 feet beyond the side of the house to install a fence with the following conditions: The fence must comply with all other fence requirements, and the fence cannot project any farther than the rear of the garage along the Morrison Street frontage. This recommendation is based on the following: Other corner lots within the subdivision exhibit fences in the same location as the appellant. Requiring the fence in the location permitted by the ordinance would interfere with the appellant's landscaping and retaining wall. Visibility will be maintained by the fence location 10 inches from the property line but stopping at the rear of the garage, and the proposed fence will not be located in any corner clearance area.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you'd like to add at this time, or we can open it up to public comment?
I don't have anything to add now.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this case? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and turn it over to the board. Ms. Lesney?
Yes, I'm in favor of putting the fence where you're requesting. Basically, you've got a big hardship with the lovely trees that you have and the landscaping. And the fact that other people in the neighborhood have fences, those were put up before the change in the zoning ordinance. So it doesn't matter what they have, but I understand where you would -- where it would be desirable to have something similar to what they have. But basically, for me, the hardship that you have in locating it and the fact that there'll be no visibility issues and no -- in general, I think it will be a benefit for your house and for the neighborhood, and I'm in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Friedman?
I did have one question. The staff in their recommendation mentioned that it can't extend past the rear of the garage. From your -- from the drawing, which I believe you assumed you submitted, that wasn't your plan at all?
Yes, that's exactly on my note what we were --
Yeah, so I have no issues with it.
Okay. Mr. Weigum?
You have a very lovely yard.
Thank you. It's a little dry at the moment.
From a tourist's perspective, I'd hate to see that fence because your yard is so lovely. It really is, and you're going to block my view of your beautiful yard. But I know that you have a patio back there, and I guess you wouldn't want everybody driving by and wanting a cup of coffee or something, so.
Yeah, we are only a couple blocks off Greenfield, so it is a pretty high-traffic area.
It is going to be a wood fence, right?
Yes.
Yeah. My own personal dislike, I don't like vinyl fences. They're shiny and not natural. So wood fences could. So, no, I'm not opposed to this.
All right. Mr. Rogers?
I'm in favor of the fence. What better way to cap off the yard with the way you've attended to your house's facade, and everything looks really clean besides the landscaping? And the house that's on the other side of Morrison Street on the corner there that's got the chain link fence, that fence actually comes up and encapsulates to the front of the garage. I don't like that. I like the way you proposed it. I like the way it -- how the garage still has an element where it's still facing the Marshall, and it's not all encapsulated by the fence. And as far as the wood fence versus the chain link, I prefer a wood fence if I were to have my druthers and six foot high also. If you're going to make it nice, make it nice.
Personally, I think the wood fences are also nicer than chain link fences, so we like that idea.
And I absolutely echo all of my colleagues' statements, and beautiful backyard.
Thank you.
You know, I have absolutely no problem with your request. Mr. Rogers, will you make a motion for us?
In regards to ZBA case number 19-16, the appellant, Matthew Gondringer, is requesting the following waiver from the board to erect a fence beyond the side of the house along a double frontage yard. Zero foot permitted, 24 and 1/2 feet proposed. Property is located on the east side of Marshall Street between Morrison Street and Webster Avenue. Address is 29708 Marshall Street. I make a motion to allow this waiver for this fence.
With the conditions.
With the following conditions that have to be met. Number one, the fence must comply with all other fence requirements. And number two, the fence cannot project any further than the rear of the garage along the Morrison Street frontage. I make this motion based upon the following: Number one, other corner lots within the subdivision exhibit fences in the same location as the appellant. Number two, requiring the fence in the location permitted by the ordinance would interfere with the appellant's landscaping and retaining wall. Number three, visibility will be maintained by the fence location 10 inches from the property line but stopping at the rear of the garage. And number four, the proposed fence will not be located in any corner clearance area.
Great, thank you. Can I have a second?
Yes.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thanks.
Will the city call the next case, please?
For ZBA case 1917, the appellant, MRJ Sign Company LLC, Mark R. Johnson, representing the owner, QR, is requesting the following waiver from the board for an additional wall sign placed on the side of a building not considered frontage. Property is located on the east side of Telegraph Road between 12 Mile and 13 Mile Roads at 29800 Telegraph Road, Sidwell Parcel 2408, 426131, zoned OS Office Service. This appeals to section 8.55, article 7, and article 2, section 8.33, paragraph 14, chapter 99 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the sign ordinance.
Thank you. Hi, good evening.
Good. How are you?
Good.
I'm going to fill this out. My name is Mark R. Johnson, MRJ Sign Company LLC, representing QR LLC that owns the building. Its parent company is Beecham Roser Development.
Mark, could you just state your address, the business address for the record, please?
Sure. And move closer to the mic, please. My address is 256 Narin Street, Ortonville, Michigan, 48462.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The major tenant that is moving into the building is Lifetime Financial Growth. They've requested a sign to be placed on the building, basically, for lack of a better way of putting it, giving them naming rights, so to speak, to the building, which is common in office buildings. The issue that we have is, on either side of the southern driveway off of Telegraph Road, are two existing signs on the brick retaining wall there, dividing wall, which are actually individual plastic letters that have a 23-karat gold leaf overlay on them. That's why they look as nice as they do. That is a trademark, so to speak, of Beecham Roser Development. For instance, in Bingham Farms, just a mile up the road at 13 and Telegraph, they have the Jamestown Development property, and have the exact same types of letters on brick walls as they do in West Bloomfield, Ann Arbor, Troy, multiple cities. So they wish to retain those. The proposed sign is an energy-efficient LED channel letter illuminated, interior illuminated sign with the letters mounted on a raceway that is painted to match the brick, and it is proposed on the south elevation of the building, which is 90 degrees and is skewed to Telegraph Road. The way the property was originally developed, the gable ends of the building, so to speak, are the south and north elevations. The west elevation, actually facing Telegraph Road, has the eve to it, so your height there, maximum height, is, you know, 10, 12 feet, which is average to an office building. Therefore, there isn't any decent area to place a sign, especially the type of sign that the tenant wishes, given the fact that they're an investment company with, basically, the Lifetime Financial Growth is a nice way to say, wealth management. I've never had wealth to manage, so I'm not quite familiar with that. But -- so they wanted to do something on the south side of the building, realizing it just faces the parking lot, but giving their clients, when they arrive at the building, the impression that they want and the idea that the quadrangle building, they're the main tenant and they have the naming rights for it. And looking at it, what was requested of me and I provided on the drawing is the square footage of both sets of the gold letters and the square footage of the sign in which we are proposing, which, when all of those are combined, we are still 37 square feet less than what would be allowed on the south elevation of the building at the 10% factor. The Lifetime Financial Growth sign is calculated regularly as your ordinance allows and is highlighted in the yellow there on the drawing. And any other questions that you may have, I'll be free to answer.
Okay, thank you. Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
Yes. For ZBA case 1917, the appellant, MRJ Sign Company LLC, Mark R. Johnson, representing the owner, QR LLC, is requesting the following waiver from the board for a wall sign placed on the side of a building not considered frontage. The property is located on the east side of Telegraph Road between West 12 Mile Road and West 13 Mile Road at 29800 Telegraph Road, Sidwell Parcel 2408, 426131, zoned OS Office Service. To the north, the property is zoned B1 Neighborhood Business and is currently developed with a single-story retail center. To the east, the property is zoned RM Multiple Family Low Rise and RT Attached Single Family in the Wildbrook condominiums. To the south, the property is zoned OS Office Service and is currently developed with an office building. To the west, across Telegraph Road, the properties are developed with a two-story medical office building, zoned OS Office Service, and a motor city mini automobile dealership, zoned B3 General Business. The subject property is heavily landscaped along Telegraph Road frontage as well as the parcel to the south. There are two entrances and exits that exist along Telegraph Road to the north and south ends of the parcel, and the building entrances are located on the north and south elevations. A survey of signage at the site reveals the following: One legal, non-conforming, due to height, area, and lack of enclosing base, indirectly illuminated with ground lights, ground sign, 40 square feet in area, approximately 6 feet in height, and at a 2-foot setback from the property line. Low brick walls are present at the entrances along the Telegraph Road frontage. The brick walls at the southernmost entrance have non-illuminated letters attached identifying the complex quadrangle and addresses, approximately 11 square feet in area. In the OS Office Service zoning district, this building is permitted one wall sign at 10% of the facade or 200 square foot maximum. This sign would normally be located on the Telegraph Road frontage. The proposed would be located on the south elevation, whose facade permits a sign at 114 square feet in area based on the 1,143 square foot of facade area. The appellant is proposing an illuminated 55.67 square foot in area, channel letter wall sign on the south elevation. The sign placement will be on the adjacent wall to the entrance for the subject business, Lifetime Financial Growth. The combination of the proposed wall sign and the existing quadrangle lettering will total 66.57 square feet of wall sign area, which is 47.43 square feet less than permitted.
Okay, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add at this time?
No, other than the fact that, as Mr. Gardella pointed out, the west elevation of the building is really landscaped well. It's kind of a hallmark of their properties. They do a Class A property throughout metropolitan Detroit, and that also somewhat limits, you know, any visibility of anything placed on the wall and the way of a wall signage there. And of course, it goes without saying, you don't want to put anything on a roof. I mean, that'd be tacky. They wouldn't even want that. So -- and again, any questions you may have.
Sure, thank you. Will the city read the recommendation, please?
Yes. Staff's recommendation is for approval of a wall sign located on a building elevation which is not considered frontage with the following conditions: The appellant agrees to eliminate the use of prohibited sign types, banners, balloons, balloon structures, portable signs of any type, flags other than country or state designations, or individuals or vehicles displaying signage visible to the right-of-way. No other wall signs be permitted, and any landscaping proposed for removal to aid in the visibility of the sign must be approved by the planning department. This recommendation is based on the following: The sign will be located on the south elevation adjacent to the entrance for Lifetime Financial Growth and will aid visitors in locating the entrance. No other wall signs on the main structure exist, and limited areas exist on the Telegraph Road frontage to locate a sign that would be visible without the removal of existing trees.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you want to add, or else we can open it up to public comment?
Just that there is no plan for any change to the landscaping, and I will let the owners be aware of that condition. But I don't think they were ever even thinking of doing anything like that because the idea was, when they get into the parking lot, you know, Lifetime Financial Growth wants their branding.
Okay, sounds good. All right, so let's open up public comment. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this case? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment and turn it over to the board. Mr. Weigum?
I guess I want to address this to you, Ed. This is a most unusual building. I frankly have never seen anything like it. Was this a former church?
No, if I might, through the chair to Mr. Weigum. It was just constructed that way. If you go up north on Telegraph Road, Bingham Farms has the same type of construction of a building. I guess it was just the era in which it was built, that that was the look that they wanted. Yes, it's unique, and it's got real unique challenges to identify it at all.
The uprights on both sides look like they have giant fireplaces inside. I mean, it's reminiscent of what I saw in England. Anyway, I don't have a problem with this, and certainly, I wouldn't even know there's businesses there if you don't put up a sign. And it's an attractive, unusual building, and so I'll go on with the city.
All right. Mr. Rogers?
Yeah, I agree with Les. When you walk -- when you drive into there, to especially a quadrangle like that, it's hard to identify all the tenants. And it was hard to identify Lifetime Financial Growth, to be honest with you. You have to stop and go slow around the building. So -- and given the location of where the sign's going to be and the beauty of the building, I'm sure it's going to be done tastefully.
All right. Ms. Lesney?
I just have one question for clarification. It said that the sign is going to be located nearer the entrance -- there's no entrance on the west side?
I believe there is an entrance to --
On the south side, I mean, on the south side.
Well, it's basically between -- the building is built with the main peak, and then directly to the right, there's a walkway, and that's where --
Oh, okay. You go the walkway. You either go around to the front or the back. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because I don't remember seeing a walkway, an entrance.
Beecham Roser does a lot of colonial stuff. Yeah, if I might.
I went to see it, so I know. But I was just curious. I agree with the findings of the city, and this property does have a hardship with regard to signage, and I approve this proposal.
Thank you. Mr. Friedman?
It's a nice building. It's a nice sign. I approve.
Okay. I also think it will be a very nice sign and will help certainly the visitors trying to find lifetime to locate that business. So -- Mr. Weigum, will you make a motion for me?
Sure.
Thank you.
In regard to case 1917, the appellate -- the appellant, MRJ Sign Company LLC, Mark R. Johnson, representing the owner, QR, is requesting the following waivers from the board: An additional wall sign placed on the side of a building not considered frontage. And the property is located on the east side of Telegraph Road between West 12 Mile Road and West 13 Mile Road at 29800 Telegraph Road. I move that we approve this sign with the following conditions: That the appellant agrees to eliminate the use of prohibited sign types such as banners, balloons, balloon structures, portable signs of any type, flags other than country or state designations, or individuals or vehicles displaying signage visible to the right-of-way, and that no other wall sign be permitted. And three, any landscape proposed for removal to aid in the visibility of the sign must be approved by the planning department. And this is based on the following: That the sign will be located on the south elevation adjacent to the entrance for Lifetime Financial Growth, will aid visitors in locating the entrance. No other wall signs on the main structure exist. Limited areas exist on Telegraph Road frontage to locate a sign that would be visible without the removal of the existing trees.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Ed, is there any balloons or any -- okay, I didn't think so.
It's a standard condition we use, yeah.
They wouldn't allow that.
Sure. Thank you. All right, so it looks like we have some minutes to approve from our last meeting on August 6. Does anyone have any corrections or changes?
I have a couple.
Okay. What page?
Let's see, page 22. I don't see where the -- yeah, it's got to be 22 because there -- yeah. Line 17, "Two metal banners or poles?"
Poles.
Not holes. And then there was one more.
What was this? "Two metal banners or holes?"
Poles.
Poles, not holes.
Poles with banners on them. So we're changing the word "holes" to "poles."
"Two metal banners or holes with banners on them."
Line 17, you got it?
Take out holes? Or --
Change "holes" to "poles."
Ah, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, makes sense. My hole has a banner.
And on page 28, it's on line 7, it's -- I think it should be, "Then why are you doing it?"
Agreed.
I don't have anything else if anybody else does.
Anybody else?
I do. Throughout this whole thing, my name is misspelled.
Oh, it sure is.
It's W-E-I, not W-I-E. German pronounced it "Weigum." If it's the other way around, it's "Weegum."
Yeah.
Is it just, if I might, through the chair, is it just this set of minutes that it was done like that? There wasn't any previous sets, correct?
No, I didn't notice it previously.
All right, and then I have several others here. On page 24, and this gets into scientific crap, but on line 16, Quirka Saba -- On page 24, and this gets into scientific crap, but on line 16, Quercus alba, the Q should be capitalized, and Quercus ruba, the Q again should be capitalized. That's genus and species of a tree. Page 29, on line 14, the three trees right here are, and it should have a two-foot DBH. And then, it didn't have the two feet, and then that's diameter at breast height. And then below, on line 16, again, I say quercus, and not quercus, the Q is capitalized. Page 36, line 20, it has a diameter, and it should be DA diameter at, miss at, at breast height, of three feet and a half, three feet and a half. I guess that's it.
Okay, so we'll get an updated copy, yes?
Yes, you will.
Great. Okay, can I have a motion to accept the minutes, though, with all those changes, and certainly the correction of Mr. Weigum's name spelling?
Aye, so we'll move.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay, so it looks like we have another meeting in a couple weeks?
Yes, if I might, through the chair to the board, we have three cases for the next meeting, two fence cases and one sign case.
Okay. Any miscellaneous from anyone?
I'm kind of curious about the numbering system here. You know, I thought it would go up, and it's spread all over the place. This offense is 1914, I mean, we had them higher. What's the reasoning?
If I might, through the chair to Mr. Weigum, it's just when they come in, sometimes... So as soon as they come in, we assign them a number. If we don't have all the information, sometimes they sit there for a little bit, and another case that has everything will end up going through, so...
And my map that was given me had only one on it, didn't have the other one on it.
This is true.
I mean, I knew what it was, the one in Telegraph, it wasn't listed. Wasn't marked.
Both of mine were marked.
No, Ed. Oh, it had the arrow without the case number on it.
Without the address.
Whatever.
We all found it. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Were you waving to us, or did you want to say something?
Okay, so that would have been through the public comment, but the meeting is adjourned. You're certainly welcome to speak or step up and...
Will you open the meeting again?
Okay, so...
I got this letter. I think that's the notice about my... Yeah, I got a letter. It talks about my fence, wooden fence.
Okay.
And I don't know if you've seen it. Can I bring it up to you?
Yep, we have a public notice as well. Yep, we received them as well.
Okay. So I was wondering, are you going to hear my cry, or what happens here? What am I supposed to do?
So everybody who lives within a certain distance of any case receives that notice so that they can come if they have anything to say about a neighbor's request for a variance request.
So I have to come back?
Yeah, do you have a fence request?
No, I had a fence up, and it's starting to fall down. What happened was, they did the patio, and the people that did it cut the fence, and a section of the fence is falling, it fell down. And whoever, Hawkins, I guess, whoever that is, she looked at it, and she was saying that I need to have it replaced, I guess.
Okay, so you might need to go see the staff? Go ahead.
If I might, through the chair, do you think that that letter is a violation of your fence? Is that what you think? It has nothing to do with your property at all.
Yeah.
You're fine. It has nothing to do with your property at all. It's to tell you that this gentleman wants a fence. It has nothing to do with you at all, other than to let you know that this gentleman, who just received a waiver, is going to put up a new fence. But it has nothing to do with your property whatsoever, as far as any sort of violation or anything like that.
Well, I live right down the street from him, I know him. But I was thinking, because she talks about the fence on the left side, do I need to do something with that fence?
No, absolutely. That was just... The only reason that was pointed out was to show that there were fences that were similar to what the appellant was going to install. It didn't mean you had to do anything with your fence, or anybody had to do anything with their fences. It was just to point out that there are similar-type fences in the neighborhood, but it had nothing to do with a problem with your fence or anything like that. Everything is fine with your property, it was just an example, that's all.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
That's fair enough for me.
All right, so we'll adjourn.
Thank you.